There's no issue.
Well, for rent, this makes like twenty bucks for a sticker every year.
Are there penalties?
If you don't, if you drive them without a sticker.
For getting your. And actually, unless we allow it on the city streets by ordinance, we can run. The other one is city streets.
We can't catch me. They are selling.
They're running go.
Nicely from boundary line to boundary line, everything is probably maintained. Even the unbrewed porch. A golf cart is side to side. Well, you can't stay.
Go in the line.
Not from the same house to city street.
But on that way that you can actually cross.
To show everyone.
Straight, straight across. It actually is in the, the ordinance I wrote provides that.
Can you go across?
You can, you can cross, but you've got to cross. You can't go down the street.
Right.
Show it showing down there.
So there you go. So now hit this right here.
All I said was written. Two years, two years. Specifically. Like these. Pair of time and put it all.
Yeah.
Minimum.
Are you gonna get up there today?
Or they. Did you figure it out to be able to download it?
It's live.
Are we live?
We have something.
Okay, we're gonna go and call this meeting to order. It is seven oh two July fourteenth of twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Ms. Paula. You guide us and guide us in our endeavors. We ask you help us as we work together as a team combining ideas for a great outcome. Enlighten us that we may know how you want us to accomplish the task and issues that we are faced with daily. We place this meeting in your hands and ask that you grant us wisdom as we seek to do good things for our city and our citizens. Help us to carefully consider the information that is put before us and guide us to make wise decisions. Bless this council, mayor, city staff, and city workers as we strive to do the best for our city. Father bless each of our citizens and may they know that we are working diligently to make their lives better. Keep all of us safe and watch over us as we go about our daily lives. We ask all of these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. But with this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any announcements? Anybody? Oh, the ca- the council or audience, any announcements?
I just want to say something. I'd like to thank Chief Alderson for his coming in here and cleaning up that place, the office over there. It looks really nice. He's taken a lot of time. Extra time to do that. And if, if I hope none of you in here ever had to pay a visit to him there, but if he did, it is a, it looks really nice over there. And I'd also like to thank our city workers for their hard work. They've been, they've been doing a great job. And like you and your crew, y'all are working really hard and it's paying off its show. So thank you.
Any other announcements? Uh, okay, uh, number five is citizens input, laying their agenda out. Uh, just so there's, so no competing. Uh, we talked about this earlier. There's actually two areas on the agenda that we can have a, uh, citizen right, you know, in, uh, citizens input. The first one is at the beginning of the agenda. Uh, it's related to agenda items. And then the, the other one that we have at the very end of the meeting is for related to non-agenda. Do we have any? Okay, Ms. Hens, you got one non-agenda and you got, I guess the other one is agenda related, is that right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And Ms. Wiggins?
Yes.
Yours, it looks like it's a, a non-related, is that right?
Probably, yes.
Okay, okay. Bear with us. It may, it may take forty-five minutes or an hour to get to the point of that. You okay with that? Okay, okay. Uh, all right. Ms. Hens, it's up to you.
I'm the, I'm the. Mr. Mayor, I have called, uh, asked to speak tonight in reference to the agenda item about the, uh, city administrator. I wish you was here. I don't like talking about folks behind the back. I, uh, have filed a formal complaint against, uh, Mr. Tyler Collins in the city of West Watkins in reference to, the EDC sale of, of property that I'm sure y'all are familiar with. And I've got a file confirmation letter. It takes, will the justice turn slow? Mr. Uh, Mr. Paxton sent me a letter. And I just want to read the first paragraph of it because it's about the open record request that I made on May twenty. And I, I'm gonna give this to you when we get through.
But I've got, I've got.
Here, uh, here's what Mr. Paxton says in, in his cover letter that he sends with all open records complaints or requests. In nineteen eighty-eight, James Bryce, if you don't know his, I'll tell you after my time, wrote, wrote that the sunlight kills the germs of corruption that can infect a government. And his words remain true today. As Attorney General, I make it a priority to encourage open government and to enforce the laws that mandate it when necessary. The Public Information Act ensures that government entities give citizens access to information about what public servants are doing on their behalf. Information they need to gain a more complete understanding of how their government works and to hold public officials accountable. Texas government does not belong to elected officials. It is, it but to the people of Texas. Uh, Texas has the right to see how their government is spending their tax dollars and exercising the powers that they are granted. That knowledge is essential to preserving the rule of law, protecting the democratic process, and defending the liberty we all cherish. Public Information Act is a critical protection for that right, and I'm proud to offer this guy in service of that goal. And that's what the cover letter for the, uh, open records manual that he sent to me in reference to the problem. And there's.
This is actually gonna be addressed. Uh, I think this is the one. Yes, sir, I've got this. I've already got one, Lieutenant.
You don't have all the papers, sir, but, but I, I don't know if your fellow councilmen got it, but, uh, I got fifteen seconds. I, I just, uh, am very, very concerned that still haven't gotten these documents. And the recording, and there's something really wrong that y'all were.
That, that's gonna be addressed from the law. Uh, okay, uh, there's no other, uh, uh, agenda related items. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda items, uh, which is, uh, approval minutes, uh, for the June eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting, uh, approved bills paid, notices he paid for June of twenty twenty-one. Approval for financial reports for twenty, June twenty twenty-one, the court report from June of twenty twenty-one. The police department report, public works, work quarter report, both completed and outstanding for June of twenty-one. The public works reports for June of twenty-one, uh, permit report, code enforcement, uh, EDC and planning and zoning minutes. We don't have those for this, for, uh, June, and, uh, we do have in your packet, the keep to watch beautiful minutes for May of twenty twenty-one. Um, moving on to item seven, old business. Oh, sorry, yeah, moving ahead.
I'd like a motion to accept the consent agenda items.
Robin first, I'm second, all in favor.
Kevin Patterson.
Leon, mine.
Amber.
Christopher.
Moving on to that, I'm seven, uh, old business, uh, location for town hall meeting, uh, which is gonna be at sixty oh seven East Highway two seventy-six. On July thirty-first, this is Saturday at nine thirty a.m., uh, we talked about that time back and forth and figured that maybe a Saturday morning would be a better time than sometime during a weekend night or a week. That we might be able to get more people out there. We will be having that on YouTube and Zoom like we do the other meetings. Uh, and it's gonna be more of an open forum type of thing. Uh, so we're looking forward to that. You got anything on that, Kevin?
Uh, I still need to get you down there and then maybe if, if any other council members would like to see it at some point, I could try to maybe meet with you and then have them come in a few minutes later. So we don't have any kind of issues there, but. There's thirty-five chairs there now. Um, I cannot remember how many tables she said. I don't know. She told me tables. How many? She just said some. So I figured once we go down there and look at that, and I've already talked to, um, her, her guy that works for her, and he told me just give him a call. So, I mean, we may, we could go one evening or this Saturday or something and, and take a look at that. But we will not be charged for this. It's, she sent me some pictures of it. The inside of it is very nice. Uh, she will, she will have someone go turn the air conditioner on Friday night. So when we get there Saturday morning, it'll be nice and temperature in there. Uh, I think it'll be great for, for us to, to be able to use that. And, and at the moment, she's not soliciting it and trying to push it out to the public yet. She's, she's at some point gonna use it for some sort of venue, but, you know, hey, maybe, maybe somebody will come. Maybe it'll be good for her. She's letting us use it. Maybe somebody that comes to the forum will, will get, see it and say, hey, man, uh, how do I use?
Yeah, it'd be good.
The building's really nice. I'd love to see something happen. But anyway, I, I, I think it'll be great. We do need to go down there and look at it. There's thirty-five chairs. So we may probably want to get another fifteen.
Or send me know we wouldn't interrupt.
Yeah.
Chair, why?
Yeah, so. I mean, you know, we were talking, I think, like fifty, or we're thinking around fifty.
Yeah.
But then again, too, I don't know as, as far as the fire chief, we may need to measure the building, measure the square footage, and, and you may need to tell us what our occupancy, um, is. So, so that's probably something we need to look at. You and I need to look at in the near future.
Also the reason for having it so early in case we had to open doors and people in and out.
Yeah. So I guess that's.
Nine thirty.
I guess that's something you and I need to make sure we look at the occupancy.
And then you macro it in there forever. Have we done that?
Mostly the election forms.
Oh, yeah, the, the election, yeah. Yeah.
That was back when this was bigger, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Y'all gonna serve breakfast?
Probably Snickers or something.
Oh, yeah, there, there will, there will be, uh, donuts there. Um, I, I plan on.
Donuts and some coffee.
I plan on buying quite a few donuts.
We'll be watching.
Okay, um, moving on to, uh, item eight, new business, uh, call for election for November second of twenty twenty-one. Um, for this election this year, uh, we have three places on the council. Uh, a kid, see council place one, city council place three, and city council place five. I guess in the future we'll be notifying, it will be publicized where the locations of the polling places will be. I'm assuming that, uh, it's gonna be at the, the old chamber, but I don't, you know, there's no air conditioning in that thing. I know we need it at that time of year, November, but, uh, I don't know what kind of shape.
It is Texas.
Yeah, yeah, you never know. So, uh, as a matter of fact, it is, that is where it's at, uh, Lake Tocqueville Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm reading here now.
It's always been there.
Yeah. And so that's gonna be, um, from eighty a.m. to, no, from seventy a.m. to seventy b.m., I'm sorry. So, uh, I guess that's all we've got on that. Uh, moving on to item eight, be discussion and or take action, uh, to place on.
You need, you need to vote, you need to motion.
For the call election, they didn't say discussion or take action.
Just says call for election.
Maybe you discuss, discussion.
Boy, you need to call the election.
Okay, uh, Leon, calling, Leon and Kevin, uh, all in favor?
Kevin Patterson.
Leon, mine.
Sam Reed.
Christopher Kent.
It is unanimous. Um, discuss or take action to place on the ballot for November second, twenty twenty-one election for the citizens to vote on the, oh, a sixty-five or over slash dis- disabled exemption. I don't know if I have any. Is there anything on there? Okay, okay. I guess the chair would entertain any discussion about that. No, lots of discuss. We just have to get it into the, to the, uh, uh, elections office. Do we have a form that we fill out just for that?
That she didn't tell me. She said that she would, they'd let me know the schedule and what she needs.
Okay.
Have we determined exactly how much it's going to be?
No, we don't. The, uh, that's not a mechanic. Uh, we don't, we don't.
The petition was, was give to the city. It's supposed to be, is it not working?
There's actually several ways you can do that. I was on the A R P. Uh, either you can freeze it, which is what a lot, lots of schools do. Freeze it at whatever year they're at, and it don't get any hotter. Or you can just say anybody overseas about don't have to pay, or you could say they have to pay.
Actually, that's what we passed. I believe that's what we already talked about.
Freeze it would be the best way.
I think this way was presented.
If, and I had this conversation with your city manager or city administrator and the actual language on the petition that was filed with y'all in the beginning. Signed by air all with qualified signatures, calls for it to follow the, the, the state constitution. It's, I don't have the paper in front of me, but it's, it's very specific. On the, on the qualifications for the number of signatures. And if you stayed in there, which we did under, under the tax code, under eleven point one three, we're asking for twenty percent. Or five thousand dollars, whichever is more on, on a person's appraised value. Or five thousand dollars, and it's frozen. And that's, that's, that's the specific language that's in the petition. It's not what's posted on the law outside. So I don't know, I don't know how you can, I don't know how the city can change the language that's written in the original petition that's filed and signed. To what's posted outside, but what's outside is not what's.
So well, if they voted on it, they said no, and they made a memo what you had put in, they can change it to anything else.
I don't think they can.
Absolutely they can, because they're the ones that we elect to make these decisions.
I don't, I don't think you could get a five thousand dollar discount. Either on freeze the taxes where they're at now or get a five thousand dollar discount. I don't think you could get a five thousand dollar discount mid-breed thing.
So you have five thousand dollar taxes.
I wish, I wish I could tell you. I, I, I just asked the elections commissioner or the new Jennifer Ashton, new elections administrator for the county. And I asked her, showed her the actual petition that's there, and it's very, very clear. And it states what the actual petition is for. So if y'all are gonna go different from the petition, then, you know, that may be a problem.
That ain't a problem. Actually, you. Hey, I'm talking now. I got the floor. He brings it to you with all these damn signatures. Y'all decide whether or not you like it. And if you don't like it, you change it to what you do like it or don't do anything at all. That's how that works.
Okay, I don't know, uh, you know, it's a discussion or take action. I don't, it sounds like we've got some confusion. Do, do you have anything you want to add to that there or make?
I, I actually haven't seen the petition.
I saw the petition that Tyler was going over for the signatures. He verified the signatures. There were enough signatures that met the requirement for.
And that's what, that's what we'll put on, that's what.
It'll be what's on that petition.
All right, so I would entertain a, a, a motion.
When do we have to have this in?
Uh, sometime in August, we're not sure.
So we don't have to vote on it tonight?
Then, uh.
I think we need to, David, I feel like we need to see it. I haven't seen it.
I make, I make.
I've, I've seen it, but I haven't really read it.
I make, I make a motion that we table this and, and until we can have the petition for the council to review. And then we can talk about it and everybody can be a little bit more educated on it before we.
Okay.
Take any action. So I make a motion.
Order, Mr. Mayor. Order. I presented this petition in writing to the council, and we had a meeting about it, and I laid it on the table with y'all and showed you examples. And y'all, you, y'all voted no. So I don't know what that precedent goes, holds here from what you've already.
So I made a, I made a motion that we.
Okay, Kevin first and then Leon second, all in favor. Moving on to, uh, I, uh, I, I, eight, see discussion and or take action on the sale of police department vehicles to the water department. And what, what this is, is that, uh, uh, you know, last year, uh, it was, there was a presentation by the chief to the sale of some vehicles and the lease, uh, of some, uh, additional police vehicles and additional, uh, public works vehicles. Uh, we, we've since scrapped that. And, uh, uh, the water department has taken on the, uh, one of the Tahoe's that was, uh, a part of the police department. We went out there last week, was it, or week before last? Checked it out, put some oil in it. I think we jump started it and. Put a battery in it and, uh, it's been running fine. So we're gonna utilize that vehicle, uh, in, in the water department. Now, of course, we can haul anything in it, but it'd be more like for a supervisor vehicle to go from, you know, job site to job site.
It does have some of our specialty tools.
Oh, it does.
It has lab equipment.
We're making great utilization out of it. We were, we were otherwise gonna sell it and have nothing.
Well, and can I also say that it saves me a lot of money to be able to purchase it from the police department versus buying other used vehicles? And I am about to put four vehicles on Renee Bates. So this helps me save a lot of money.
Yeah.
Which is what I need.
Thousand, thousand. Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, any discussion? Hold that.
Two, it was the white Ford of one fifty, uh, the old, uh, patrol truck and then one of the Tows.
Okay, chair to introduce a motion.
I make a motion. We, uh, we take action and on sale of it, like the water department, buy the cars from the police department.
And, and just so we're clear on the record, it's really in the purchase and sale. This is really, it's more in the form of a budget amendment. We're moving.
Yes.
An asset from the water.
Yeah, yeah, that's all. Yeah. Yeah, he is. And, and, and with that, yes, sir.
Well, I was gonna also say we are moving it from line item number one, two, six, one, one, four, five.
Hang on, how long does the moment? Uh, one, one, six?
One, two, six.
One, two, six.
One, one, four, five.
One, one.
Okay, that's where we're transferring the money from.
Okay, and that's going to the PD.
Yes, sir.
So it's really, it, it's really not a, a sale, so to speak. There's no actual money. Anyway.
I, I, I second that improvement.
Who made the first?
We, we are transferring. Yes. How much are we transferring? A total of eight thousand dollars, uh, four thousand per vehicle.
Uh, all in favor?
Kevin Patterson.
Leon, mine.
Christopher Kent.
It is unanimous. Um, uh, we have, is YouTube working?
They said it's not. Said it went live, but I heard it even say you're live, but. I, I, I received a message from somebody in the city. They're about saying it's not live. I don't know. It's.
Okay, I guess we'll, I guess we'll.
We'll have to keep trying to.
I guess we'd still be able to download it.
Yeah, it's recording, it is.
Okay. Okay, moving on to, uh, C O D. I mean, it's S C, but it's actually D. Uh, discussion and action of police department purchase of a vehicle to replace vehicles in the water department. So the vehicles that we, that we moved from the police department to the, uh, water department are, they're, they're decent vehicles, good vehicles, but they're not, uh, to the caliber that a police department would use because police departments have to pursue. And, and much different than what we're gonna be utilizing these vehicles in the, in the public works department. So that being said, we're, uh, the, the monies that we transferred, uh, are, is, 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 uh, we're looking at purchasing another police vehicle, uh, not like we were talking about before through a lease program or anything like that. But, uh, we've been looking around. We think we've got a couple of, of vehicles spotted. We're only gonna be purchasing one, correct? So that will, that will help us, uh, recover, uh, and maintain a, a good fleet for pursuit purposes in the, that we need that. Uh, do you have anything you want to add to that, John? No. Is there any other discussion?
Well, I mean, just, just so, just so the audience knows here and the citizens know, um, right now, currently, we only have two, two patrol vehicles.
Right.
Okay. Um, both of those are, are chargers.
And you're in good shape.
They are in good shape, um, but the, the, the issue would be, once we do start getting staff, once, once people start coming in and, and interviewing our people, we're gonna run out of vehicles. We're gonna run these ragged, which, uh, the one until, until John came in. I didn't know it. I don't think anybody knew it, but the newest car we have has sixty. Has sixty thousand miles on it, which about blew my head off. I, I had no idea.
Well.
Uh, but that's, that's water under the bridge at this point, but, but it's a, it's a current situation, right? So we've got a, what I thought, or what a lot of us probably thought was a brand new car, it has sixty thousand miles on it. So we, we, you know, we really are gonna need to add, add that fleet because once we get officers in here.
Well, we, we will, but one of the things, and, and just a reminder to, to, to the council members and to the, the audience. We, we stop vehicles from going home. At, at one time, we had up to nine vehicles, eight, nine, eight or nine vehicles. That went home every night. They didn't go to Holmes here in West Watkins. They didn't go to Quinlan. They were going to a number of different. It was, it was a very costly thing, and, and we stopped that months and months ago, uh, six months ago, I guess. Long time ago, we stopped on it. So that's gonna, that's gonna preserve.
Make sure we're transparent, not stopped completely. There are still something.
And there is, yes, uh, as a matter of fact, the chief will have one that he takes on because he's often called out. We had a shooting in Indian Oaks, uh, a week or two ago. And, uh, the chief was called out to that, you know, nobody was shot, but. And uh, the chief was called out to that, you know, nobody was shot, but it was a a shooting call. And uh, so he had to come out. So there's times that he's gonna have to come out and and do those things. And uh, we're gonna have two, at well, I'm gonna say three vehicles in public works going on. One of them is less than a mile from here and where it's gonna go on to.
He lives in the city limits.
Yeah, he lives in the city limits in Bella Vista, so. An extra mile on the day, so, but he'll be our own call, our main on-call person. So he'll be able to react about anything. So we're not gonna have the problem of the, you know, the. The fuel and the and the mileage and everything else added to it, so. Uh, that will, that will uh correct that problem. Anyway, any other discussion or comment?
I do.
Yes.
I I was up at seeing, I hope you don't mind if I kind of discuss what we talked about, but I asked chief. What kind of vehicle would you prefer? And he said he would prefer a Tahoe. And so I kind of, we kind of talked a few minutes more. And I didn't realize this, that in some of the 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 cars. That they were actually transporting people that they had arrested in the front seat.
Yeah, it's got, yeah, it's got a special lock on the seat though.
And that, I mean, I I I mean, I'm sure there's security there. You know, there's some things in place to keep it secure. But that was very concerning to me because. If somebody flips out in that front seat, you know, or whatever, you know, you're gonna have to know and try to drive your vehicle, but the same and what have you. So he would prefer a larger vehicle. So my question is, what have you been looking at? Have you been looking at?
Yeah, but that's where tasers.
That was just, you know, that was just a small portion of the.
The one car out there that's got a light bar, it's got a cage in it. They took the cage out of this one. I guess the old chief took the cage out. Cage is sitting out there. With patrol guys when they drive. We have cages for all.
So where do y'all look for these?
On the good old air web.
Other agencies?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, you could, yeah, you could really. You start making some calls around, you can really find some some good deal at agency that's, you know. Some of these agencies uh swap them out, you know, bigger agencies can afford to swap these vehicles out. On a more regular basis than some of those smaller agencies. So you can get some really, really good deals. I mean, these these Tahoe's, which are, they seem to be about the best vehicle. The pickups are the absolute worst vehicle. To have as a as a patrol vehicle. The chargers are good. But you know, they don't hold up as well on some of our roads as the Tahoe's do. So the Tahoe's will hold, but they endure a lot more than these chargers will. Uh, but the the Tahoe's seem to be the the go-to for almost every police department and DPS. Uh, around and in and not just Texas, but everywhere.
So in the past, you could get them pretty easily from other departments. Uh, they have some for sale now. I've looked at. I don't know, probably ten departments around, including DPS, but with DPS, they're actually split up in sectors. But right now, it's kind of tough to get them from any of those departments that are any good.
Right.
The ones you're gonna get are the ones that they don't want, and there's gonna be something wrong with them. And they tell you what's wrong with them, but you're gonna have to buy something to fix. Um, the reason for that is because of shortage of vehicles.
Yeah.
Uh, my my own company right now, we just had to place orders for vehicles um for two years out. So we had to place all of our vehicle orders for two years ahead. Because of the way vehicles are are being manufactured.
Yeah, the main distributor, reliable Chevrolet. And he hasn't had a pursuit Tahoe on there since.
So we found.
The territories at dealerships or. The used car market the last few years is up thirty percent.
You can't even get a chair in thirty weeks, right? There's several chairs in every hall. I wanna make a motion that that uh. That we go ahead and and give the permission and and approve the 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 spying of a new vehicle.
I have one question on that. Do we have a budget for that? Where are we?
It's.
It'd have to be below fifty thousand. So fifty will have to be.
Yeah, and and I think, I think right. I think right now, Ned and John have have looked through with with the transfer of funds for uh water sewer. To police department and including the auction money that you had and some other, some other line items that we've we've been able to. Um, pull from, I think y'all came up with like forty thousand dollars, right? So so he's. And and the last one that John was telling me about, I think, was twenty twenty. Twenty three?
Yeah, the one that I'm looking at, well, nineteen thousand.
Okay, so see, I we hadn't even talked since then. So, you know. He was, he was giving a number that, hey, there's forty thousand dollars here. And then the first time he came to me, he's like, hey, check this one out. I found this. What do you think? I was like, well, cool. I mean, you know, try to see if he could send you car facts, whatever. And uh, and I and I didn't say anything to him, but it was twenty three thousand dollars. I thought, well, that's kind of cool, you know. He had forty, so.
Well, and let me, I wanna clear that up for people in the audience on on YouTube or whatever. Uh, last year, the, I believe it was last year, the beginning of this year, the chief auctioned off. Uh, vehicles, equipment, things like that. To to raise money to go towards what we were gonna do with leased vehicles. And we like say we shut that down. Uh, and the the monies, it doesn't touch where these monies are coming from. Which is from this, the 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 sale of the uh. The police vehicles to the public works and that's where this money is coming. We're not, we're not having to go to a particular line item. We don't have to move any money or anything like that. We don't have to dip into anything. The money is there. So we're not really spending uh anything. More than we already had. So we're not, I like, we're not putting any new money in it, is what we're I'm saying.
We're actually saving a lot.
Yeah, we're saving a lot of money. So there's no new money coming from the budget to cover the cost of this vehicle. Because the monies have already been raised for it and sold in auction sales and things like that.
First by me and second by Robin.
Okay, uh. All in favor?
Kevin Pedersen.
Leon mine. Chris Burkett.
It is unanimous. Okay, it is uh, uh, seven thirty seven. Uh, executive session, the council meeting or two. Close or executive session, discuss the following, which is A personnel. Under Texas code five five one dot oh seven four, job review, disciplinary action and employment of city administrator. Uh, so what we're gonna do is nineteen thirty seven, we're gonna step back to the back. We shouldn't be too long. Uh, just ask for your patience and uh.
Do we end it?
I was just saying, there was a guy on park, he's got a hospital, he had COVID and he needed it for a few weeks.